Okay, call the regular meeting of council June 20th, 2024 to order, please. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Aye, Councilor Heisler, move to approve the agenda.
Secondary?
Aye, Councilor McKenzie, second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, mind it. Motion carried, thank you, council. Consent section, does everybody agree to the consent section?
Can we move the, pull the treasurer's report and the fire report into item 7B and C?
Okay, so once they're removed, I get everybody's approval? Okay, thank you, moving on. Disclosures of interest, council? No disclosures, great, we move on to item 5, public input inquiries, I don't believe we have any tonight. And item 6, presentations, petitions or delegations, we don't have any. Okay, we have some business arising from the consent section, item A is the Upper Kingsley Fire Department truck purchase. I'll turn your attention to the screen behind me.
If it'll work on you.
Should work.
Okay, so we're back again for the truck proposal, so I thought I'd do a PowerPoint so you guys can have a visual of kind of what we're talking about, plus it'll answer some of the seven questions that were brought up in the email there earlier. So that's actually what the truck will look like, similar to that one, with few changes, obviously to our spec. So basically what we're doing this for is the five to 10-year plan, look ahead, so why it's important. So it's mainly ULC standards and NFA rating for fire engines, so it's 20 years for the first out truck. Maintain our equipment for insurance reasons, obviously, to be accountable to our taxpayers. And then number one is overall safety and our firefighters and the taxpayers. So basically, those are the five trucks that will have to be replaced within the next 10 years roughly. So our rescue, pump two is the one that is currently being looked at to be replaced, but it's already expired. Pump one, engine two and engine one, so those are the years they were manufactured and then the due dates they will expire on the 20-year. So rescue one, it's not, doesn't have a ULC rating because it's, doesn't have a pump. So it is a heavy rescue, but there is no ULC rating for that as far as the pump goes and the lifespan of it. Don't we leave those up there, Terry, for a second?
Just one sec.
Yep.
And you can provide this to us, correct?
Yeah, I can send you this too, yeah.
Okay.
So what does this look like going in the future there? So in the next five years, three engines probably will have to be replaced, pump two is currently already expired. Pump one and then engine one, or engine two, sorry, that's the order that they'll have to be replaced. And then next 10 years, engine one has to be the last one, it'll be 2035. And the heavy rescue somewhere in the mix, if we can get one, that depends on money and council and all that stuff.
That's the heavy rescue right there, right?
That's, that's the heavy rescue. And then planning for pump one, which is the next truck, should start around 2026, that's getting drawings, whether or not you want to go stock unit or a custom unit, so planning should start then because of the wait time to get a new truck that we discussed about. So that is a truck that we're looking at getting replaced right now, that's the pump two, that's at station two right now. It's a 2002 Top Mount Sterling, got 1,000 gallons of water, 1050 GPM pump. So this year it'll be 23 years old, so it's currently at two years expired past the ULC for the 20 years for the first out truck. So the new engine, that's what the new engine, like I showed you the first picture would look like, similar to. It's a 2024, 2025, depending on if we get one or when we get one. It's got a 1,500 GPM waters pump, 1,500 gallons of water, which is a bonus for us, more water, it's, it's better for our rural setting that we need, plus it does have the dump chutes in the back. So some of the questions that were brought up, so why the cost difference? So a custom cab, you can kind of see on the left-hand side, which is a custom cab, it's made for firefighting. The one on the right is engine two, that's a commercial chassis, that's similar to like the road crews that you would see on the streets, dump trucks, paving trucks, similar to that. So there is a cost difference on the chassis, but the lifespan is one of the benefits on it. So the commercial chassis, there's tremendous delays on getting freight liners and internationals right now. Some of the trucks in the province, through Metal Fab, through Pierce, E1, there've been huge delays on getting those. Some of the trucks are three, four years, have been delayed, that have already been tenured out. Some examples are New Maryland's truck was quite a delay of getting their chassis, Fredrickton, they're still waiting on getting the chassis at Metal Fab. And Muskwash, theirs is like five years to get their truck, so just shows, to show the delays. So like I said, custom chassis is for firefighting, commercial is more for road work and dump trucks. They can be utilized as fire trucks, but like I said, the longevity of the chassis on a custom usually ends up being quite longer. And as you can tell by our ladder truck, that's like immaculate, it's, they last a lot longer, they're made for firefighting. Ergonomics of getting out of the truck, you don't have the big step out with the big gear, you're SCBA, you're not cramped in those trucks. So that's a benefit, and safety is one, two as well. Firefighter safety is way better with the custom unit, has airbags and safety features, so rollover protection, the roofs don't crush as easy, they're weighted at, what's the weight on the top of them, Zoe?
20 pounds.
Yeah, 20,000 pounds they put on the roof of those custom ones versus the dump trucks, those, those crush quite easily. So another question was the stock units, so why, why stock unit versus a custom order? Stock unit, we can get right away and still meet our specs, we still can make some changes to the stock unit trucks. Custom order, doesn't matter if it's commercial or custom chassis, with price adjustments, and then it could be a minimum two years. But like I said, it's been three, four years for some of the other units getting the trucks. And with the delays in wait time, the stock unit's the way to go for at least our first truck, I suggest, but that's on you guys, whether or not you want to go that route. And this way, this will get us ahead rather than playing catch-up on trying to catch up on the trucks. And it's more from the government aspect side of things, where they were doing the transition in the rural communities and all this stuff. A lot of this stuff got behind, not just our department, there's other departments that, even that Metal Fab, they were behind. Pierce was behind, everything like that, so they're trying to play catch-up, which isn't a good thing. And that's the site, I'll see if the link works, I don't know if it works or not. So this is a Pierce site, oh, it's not showing. Okay, so this is one of the Pierce sites, this is Atlantic, one of the dealers, but these are what stock units look like when they sell them. Our dealer, Jim, they do their normal stock unit trucks that they sell a lot of, and it's the bare bones, so the tank size, the pump size, all that stuff's the same. So where they've had so much delay, where they're trying to get trucks out, they build these stock unit trucks where they already have the specs drawn out and plans done up, and they already have it on assembly lines, so they can get them out a lot quicker. So people buy these, they can customize them, like we were looking at customizing our unit. So you can change minimal things on it to meet your needs. Another, another issue was like the commercial chassis, like this one here, the majority of them don't come with dump valves, is one of the major things that we do need on the back of the truck. So that was why we spec'd the one for Maxi Metal. But I just wanted to show you the site, that if you scroll down, there's tons of different trucks that can get stock unit. So that's one reason. Another thing was, we don't have, we didn't say yes, we don't have any obligation to Maxi Metal right now. We didn't say yes to a contract, didn't write anything down, nothing like that. Jim is holding it for us, the reason why it hasn't sold, because it's still being built. So the chassis is being built in Florida right now, so whether or not we end up taking it or not, it's going to go to somebody else. So if we say no, then it'll go to somebody else, it'll go like hotcakes. So there's another one in February being built, the exact same spec almost, and then one on 2025 September. So if we can't get the funds or get the yes or no for, for a unit, if you want to go the stock unit route, we could get the other one in February or September. The drop deadline to get any changes done to the truck we were looking at, that I showed you the drawings of in the last meeting, is July 11th. So if we can't get the meeting or the funds for it, we might have to shoot for a February truck, if that's a possibility with you guys.
But the price that you gave us in the documents, that is everything that you guys wanted on it, and that's all the changes?
Yes, that was the budgetary price with all the changes that met our specs, that we put into it for the changes. So any other questions? I think that answered all the questions, but I thought I drew a PowerPoint, that way it's a little more visual for you guys to actually see some of this stuff. It's not going to be too long or...
They look cool, too. Like it's, looks like something like LAFD trucks and stuff, like hey, we're actually modern.
So the one that we have, the one we're proposing, it's more, it has a little pump on the back, more water, nice sized pump on it, and it will meet all of our needs. So we can go with stock unit truck, if you guys wanted to go a custom order truck, like I said, it's going to be two years minimum to order one. You can do that on your next truck, next engine or pump that we ordered, through whoever you guys want. But Metal Fab, E1, Dependable, Fork Eer, they don't really have any stock unit trucks. Pierce is really one of the only ones, or is Dependable out of Ontario, but neither of their trucks have dump valves in the back, they're all city trucks basically, so you would have to have a high-ridden area to run to those ones. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yep?
All right, I forget what it was, the difference in the prices that they brought up to us. So those are just stock trucks, ones that they're talking with, other places have been buying, and they're not modified for what they want to use them for, though?
So this is, this is a stock truck right now, so you can make modification, minor modifications. Things like the tank size, the pump size, you won't be able to change that.
Okay.
But a lot of departments are going this route because there's such a delay, they're trying to play catch-up.
Okay.
The plant in Florida for making these, they doubled their staff trying to catch up on making chassis, that's how bad it's been. So it was 200, I'd say it was like 250 personnel, now it's up to 500 personnel, trying to get out more chassis.
So it takes two years, available, that many people?
But they're such a backlog, you'd be surprised.
Now, I'm not surprised.
And to get chassis like these or even these ones, that's what takes the longest.
So that's why the difference is that people are just kind of settling for what they can get, not getting what they want necessarily?
Yeah, somewhat, yeah, somewhat yes, somewhat no.
So Matt, these dump valves, they must obviously be quite expensive? Because you were saying the difference was about 100,000 or 150,000?
It'd be 100,000 for the chassis, so that chassis versus that one, it's about 100, 125,000.
All these dump valves, are they equipped?
It's just everything else on the truck. So take for instance, New Maryland's truck, I know people looked at that one, it was about 700 and, I think 40,000 roughly, and some change, plus tax on top of that. That was a commercial chassis like that one over there, like I showed you. Now take for instance, or Mcdougal right now, they have one up at Metal Fab being built and they're still waiting, it's probably going to be two years. It's 2.1 million. So it can vary from truck to truck. Fredrickton's truck, it was a commercial chassis and they're still waiting for it at Metal Fab, it's 896,000, so, plus that. So we're, we're about 1.1 million. Fredrickton's truck from the same place that we're looking at, but there is a custom order, so they spec'd out all the cabinets, everything right from the get-go. That's 1.4 million. So we're kind of right in the middle almost of trucks, you can go as high as you want, or you can go as low as you want, so. But if we do go lower, we're going to have a delay on wait time. So it's up to you guys if you want to wait, but we also have to look ahead too, that we're going to have to do another truck for 2029 to replace, so.
So is that going to be another 1.2, or is that possibly going to be 800,000 dollars?
Less or more. Yeah, you could go 800,000 if we go up, go a custom unit truck and we plan at 2026 to start ordering it ahead of time. Though that way it's here before the delay, because after that, they're back-to-back-to-back those engines, so. Of the, of the meeting the ULC standard.
Matt, what I see there is what, it's a dump valve, bigger tank, bigger pump, commercial chassis, and a bigger cab, that pretty well covers the customization?
Yeah, there's some other little things like valving and some other stuff that we put on there, but that was included.
This would be the, this would be the major stuff?
That's the major stuff, yeah. We put some NIV valves and motorized valves into it.
But like I said, we're rural, rural, we need a bigger tank, we need a bigger pump.
It will be a benefit, most of our trucks right now are currently all 1,000 to 1,100 gallons, so the extra water will help.
What's this one, what's the bigger, how many more?
1,500 gallons, it's about 1,800 US GPM, so it's about...
30% more, yeah. And the commercial chassis, that must be quite, you know, that's a substantial change obviously, but it's something that's needed in rural environments, where we're not running over paved roads and whatnot, we're running over country roads.
I had a question, it's more to do with, you said this, the current one is two years expired?
Correct, yeah, pump two is 22 years currently, so 2025.
Expired means there's no rating, UL rating.
Okay, so at what point did they say, "We won't do that anymore"? Like, will they just like, continue to let it go for...
For insurance purposes and stuff, lead truck must be under 20 years old.
Right.
That is not a lead truck.
Oh, okay.
So it can haul water, it can run to accidents, it can run to backup for fires and so on.
So the lead truck, though?
Has to be.
Has to be, so they will not extend that at all?
What, what you would find is, is everyone's, our rating through UL, it's a lot, therefore a smaller cost.
Okay, that's, okay, good to know, that's what I was...
But he was, I think he was to the meeting today with local government had it and UL saved it up there and explained how the insurance went and that he was like at a five.
Sold with the rating, yeah.
Yeah, that, you don't, it maps, you don't, everyone, the residents are going to pay through the nose for insurance.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
So right now, I believe we're 3B, so that's quite significant when it comes to insurance.
Will this new truck help our rating any?
Uh, that just, all it does is just fills in the gap so that we won't...
Lose our rating?
We won't run out, like, you know, what I mean? We won't have a lead truck that's more than 20 years old.
So what's the lead truck you're using right now, what's the age of that one?
16.
So that's the one you're talking about replacing in 2029?
Yeah, 20.
That's the one we're looking at in 2026, to look at?
Pump one.
Yeah.
Who do you see with this one?
I...
Was it over 20 years old? Or is it a new one, what can you do with this?
That would be, that would be up to council and chief, so we technically can utilize that as a tanker. But if they wanted to utilize it as a tanker, that's up to chief, or they could sell it. Where it's not serviceable like as far as the lifespan, another department could take it for a tanker. Or they would have to get it recertified, put a new pump or get ULC to re-rate it, which is a lot of money too, to redo it. Especially at the age with the frames and everything like that, it's a lot more money to do all that stuff.
Yeah, I was just, I was curious, wondering, you know?
So right now, there are four main trucks out, or if you can include the heavy rescue. Engine two and engine one are out, engine two is out of station two, engine one is out of station one. And then each station has a pump, which is one of the ones we're replacing, those are more for mutual aid. So if we get called to New Maryland or whatever, they would take one of those trucks or because of bridge. So they would take a tanker and manpower for that mutual aid call. And then our heavy rescue is based at a station one, so those are the main trucks. We do have a mini pumper, which is newer, which is fine, that doesn't really hold UL ratings for actual structural firefighting, you can utilize the pump for it, but it doesn't have a tank size for it.
Okay, Councilor McKenzie?
The difference between an engine and a pump?
People call them different things, mostly people think of, when they say an engine, you think of inside the city limits, it's under 500 gallons of water. Pumps or tankers, or pump or tankers, you think of more rural, like us, so they have more water onboard. And about the same size pump, but that's the difference between...
Are our engines 1,000 gallons, or?
Yeah, ours are just for dispatch purposes, so we don't, so we know what trucks go.
In the city, I think they've upped those, they may, they're up to 1,000 gallons now. It used to be down to as low as 300 gallons.
Wow.
Because I...
Yeah.
That's a difference.
Yeah, so their, their rural stations, or rural stations, station four and station three for Fredrickton, they've upped their rating and got 1,000 gallon trucks. So the newest truck that they're getting from Axie and Metal Fab, both have a 1,000 gallons minimum and dump valves on them. That's what they had before too, with the, when they had the fundings coming from all the rural communities. But they're going 1,000 gallons for those stations. Station one and two have their quints, so they, they only have like 300 gallons, 400 gallons of water on them. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Matt?
So once our trucks that are on the front line, once we replace those, can we use those trucks in our second line?
Yeah, you can utilize them as tankers, so they can go to other stations or station three.
Okay.
Possible, but we won't be getting rid of any trucks.
But we could sell some of these vehicles if we had to?
Next rotation, I might, but...
But not for a while?
Not, not for a while, but this rotation though.
Okay.
Good to have that after...
Yeah.
We could move one to station three.
Yeah.
Yeah, one would go to station three possibly. If we sold, or if we ever went down the road to get our heavy rescue replaced, we probably could consolidate and get rid of support one, no rescue one, and then sell those, because there are no UL ratings, and then get a new truck that way, but that's down the road, so that's something to look at.
Yeah, because I saw the options when they were up there, there was some of them had, it was pump plus rescue. So you got, there's your back and stuff on it with all...
So there's tons of different options, but we're just looking at replacing the engine or pumper right now, trying to get ahead of the game. Because if we let it go too long, we don't want to have to be placing it. And the increase of price going up too, it doesn't matter if you get a commercial or a custom cab, it's going up regardless, so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks Matt, very good information for council and I have, appreciate showing up, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 7B, the CAO treasurer's report.
Okay, so on my treasurer's report, previously when the Upper Kingsley Fire Department was under the province authority, DNR would reimburse the fire department when they go out for forest fires and stuff. So that is broken down into personnel and equipment use. So we would like to, Chief Cross and I had discussed this, and previously they were able to use those funds in their Upper Kingsley Fire, Firefighters Association account or whatever. So we thought that any money that comes back that was used for the vehicles, keep that here so that we can use them for expenses and stuff. The little amount that comes back for the firefighters, that we could reimburse their firefighter association, and they could use that for payment for their firefighters that went, or birthday cakes, or if somebody is sick, or whatever you guys, what do you typically use?
Typically, money for labor goes to the individual that is on the fire.
Oh, okay.
So if you were on a forest fire for a long time, three hours,
Right.
you'd get three hours' wages. And I think it's probably 21 dollars.
21 dollars.
So you would get 63 bucks for fighting that fire that day.
Okay, so we could, maybe if that's the case, then I will talk to our auditor first and see if it's better if we just do that and reimburse the firefighters, because I get that list of them. Or if it's better to give back to the association or whatever. So I thought that it was more of a kind of a slush fund that you guys could use for whatever that you needed it for, but if it is going back for wages, I think it'd be best if I talked to our auditor first. So I'll bring this back to council and whatever, once I find out additional details on that. So I don't need a mention on that one, fortunately after we just pulled it, so we can, this is tabled until next month or...
Anything else you want to put forward, other than what's on your treasurer's report?
Um, no, I believe that is good for now.
And motion to receive treasurer's report?
One second.
Any questions?
Oh, sorry, Councilor McKenzie, motion to receive treasurer's report.
Have a secondary?
Susan Joe.
Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, mind it, motion carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to the...
Fire Department Board.
Isn't the stuff down in the consent, that huh?
We pulled that.
Oh yes, we pulled that one, right, okay. Chief Cross, you're up.
Ding ding, mayor, councilors, no members of the public, so. May we have 23 calls? As you can see. And as of today, we're up to 106 since January 1st. There are a variety, grass fires, May is typically a busy month for grass fires. And of course accidents. Any questions?
No question for Chief Cross?
So...
Yes.
Just a question on these rubbish fires, are these neighbors calling on neighbors burning?
Some of them are, yeah.
So is there any, any terrestrials laid?
Uh, no, but conservation's notified. Every grass fire, as you know, threatening the forest, DNR's notified. And they go out and check sometimes, 99% of times they do, then conservation. If you have a neighbor across the road that, he got ticketed the other day. The fire was burning, it was red, well, he said it was yellow, but eight o'clock at night, eight o'clock in the morning. And then this was two o'clock, and it ripped, and made the fellow throw him out.
Block said everything's sold, right?
Conservation counted that.
What would typical fires like be?
I'm not sure, I think it's 172, 50.
Is that the minimum?
Is that the minimum? And they were telling me that they were all gone, no more warnings. They've run their lots off, and them two young fellows I was talking to said, no more warnings, everyone's being charged.
Any other question for Chief Cross?
I'd just like to make a comment for, to have on record. Chief Cross did a, or the Upper Kingsley Fire Department did a training course for emergency firefighting.
Yeah.
It was a two-day course, the weekend before last. And our summer students and our recreation director took that, so kudos to them for stepping up to be willing to help handle if we happen to have forest fires. So I think it just should be recognized that our students went above and beyond to help us in emergencies, so. Students and recreation directors.
And everything that went on last weekend seemed to...
Yes.
Very well.
Now this weekend, stop talking of training, this weekend is, I'm doing auto extrication, we're hosting. Starts Friday night, runs through to Monday night. This is through Capital District. That's why all the vehicles are there.
I wonder, if I saw them all there, I'd think, that's a lot of...
I wonder, because I saw them all there, I thought, that's a lot of parking.
Believe it or not, not like it was fifteen years ago, it's hard to come by vehicles. So try to get them gathered up, and to get them not to do the job like, you know. Always begin to be a pain in the butt. So we have thirteen, we've been working on it for four months, five months.
Okay, any other questions for Chief Crowe? Can I get a motion to approve the fire department report, please?
Aye, Hallie, I slid the two, um, accept the fire department, receive the fire department report.
Secondary.
Counselor, bring the seconds.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor are signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, oh, all those contrary minded. Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Have a good weekend or night and weekend.
And weekend. We're still resting up from last weekend.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the new business under the eight A Mayor's Challenge. Ignite works as a newcomer summit. That's a little bit of discussion there.
So, um, Ignite is having a challenge to the mayors. They are putting on a gala, so tables are eighteen hundred dollars. And we can either purchase a table and invite newcomers from our community to attend it or not have a table, so. I really wish that if these things were going to happen, that we would know about them before we do the budgets and stuff. That's my only, um, concern.
We don't have a lot of newcomers in Hanwell anyway, that I'm aware of. Not a lot, a few.
I'm not sure.
I mean, yeah. I mean, in this case, like you say, but I'm thinking that these things do tend to come up every year or so, or maybe possibly when we're doing our budget, we should. Because I'm sure they probably don't have this planned, you know, enough in advance that they could put it in before our budget, and they're not going to advertise them. So possibly what we should be doing in future is allowing a minor for this type of thing. Because we had the, um, oh, the rotary here a few years ago.
Yes, and that table.
Yeah, we had a table, could have got a table there, and and these things will come up, so whether we do it this time or not, we should plan ahead maybe.
Okay, any desire to do this? Okay, we'll move on to the N D power handle vegetation control program.
I can talk about that. I think I've already seen that in your package. Um, in previous years, we've written to them and just kind of said, no, we, for the intent. Um, however, um, I actually emailed saying that I've copied the map, which I've given to you. So the map that I provided is where they're actually going to be doing the spraying. So it's just along the power line that runs, I'm assuming, from Hanwell to, I don't know, something like that. Power line, that's what we, we do the spraying, it looks like, so.
Yeah, this is not the type of spraying we objected to before.
No, it's different, it's different, yeah.
This is actually applied just to the power line.
Just the power lines, yeah.
So if we'd like to keep our power on, it's probably a good idea to spray herbicide.
Well, I mean, it is herbicide, it's herbicide, it's herbicide. We'll just play it out on the stations, or not.
Uh, Council Heisler.
Okay, so I just want to say thank you for getting the information for me, because I had contacted Sherry to ask for the map as to where they were spraying, because my concern was, um, I have a power line that runs behind me, as do many residents in Hanwell, so I wanted to ensure that where they were spraying wasn't going to be close to a residential area, or that those residences that might be nearby need to be informed. Because I certainly wouldn't want kids out running around if they were going to be spraying nearby, or me, or my pets, or anybody else. But I would want the residents to be informed, right? But it doesn't look according to this map.
According to the green lines, that Hanwell hill, where the snowing hill trail crosses the road, and it goes right back to transmission table. Transmission lines all the way to our boundary, which we bound with charter settlement there.
So that, yes, that's why I asked for the map, because I wanted, I wanted verification as to where she was going to do it anyway. Is this something we should be putting out on the website, just to let people know that this is going to take place?
I'm trying to think, was any residents there handy where actually where crosses the road?
There are.
Deputy Mayor Jonah.
Um, first of all, um, those are, I think, the type of power lines that they do spray. The small ones in behind your house, now, they don't spray those, they they trim them by hand.
They wouldn't trim them by hand normally.
Yeah, so they shouldn't be too much of a concern. Um, and I do believe that they advertise their program too. You know, it's provincial, it's all on paper, it's on their websites. They, they will inform people.
Yeah.
I mean, we can also share it. There's no question about it. We can share their information when we come out.
Okay, we're good? All right, moving on, this A C, our subdivision adjustment request, that's coming from us to local government, basically, on a sentence.
Excuse me, so, um, they had sent out a request wondering if any municipalities wanted to merge their subunits. So I had, um, filled out the form and didn't state that I needed a motion or anything, and just said that now that our tax rates were all the same, we're all into the recreation agreement and everything else, that I thought that we could, um, combine them just to have like Hanwell and Hanwell Streetlights. So.
Makes sense. I mean, we don't need a whole bunch of subunits to make things more complicated. Subunit controls the tax rate. We only have like a basically, Hanwell no streetlights, Hanwell streetlights. That's the only two we have that are different.
Because if you remember, um, when we first started to budget, um, when it was the municipal reform, we had the option of, um, changing our tax rates over like the five years or whatever. And we said we would just kind of bite the bullet like right then, so, um, that didn't kind of affect us, so. I just think, um, so they came back and said that they would like to have, um, direction from council, so. I would just, if you guys are okay just doing the two subunits. So I have provided you with the motion on merging. I, councillor De Cleve, direct and authorize the C A O to apply to the province to merge our taxing subunits to Hanwell and Hanwell Streetlights by combining subunits one seventy-five dash two Kings Clear and subunit one seventy-five dash four Ludford subdivision with one seventy-five dash zero Hanwell, subunit one seventy-five dash three Kings Clear Oswald Gray subdivision to be merged with one seventy-five dash one Hanwell Streetlights.
I, councillor, hold a second. Any questions, comments?
I have one.
Yes?
Um, I just, this will not change or impact the tax rate any other way, right?
No.
It's just gonna stay, okay, yeah, perfect.
Okay, uh, we have a motion. Motion is seconded, come before. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor are signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, proclamations, we have none. Upcoming activities is the adult pickup soccer, R C B public meeting coming up on June the twenty-seventh at seven P M.
Um, sorry, I'd like to interrupt with that.
Sure.
Um, so I didn't realize that you hadn't spoke with Megan to say that it was changed to Wednesday, and we have a booking in the hall, so we can't have it Wednesday.
I spoke to Megan before, man.
Um, for Thursday, and it was booked in like a Thursday, because, and then we had to change it because you had a.
But I did speak to Megan about it, and it was, it was open at that time. So we, what we have is a contact with dates, and is that the same?
Yes, so we will not be able to do it on the twenty-sixth.
So we'll have to find another date.
You said the twenty-seventh, and you said the twenty-sixth, so which date were we looking at?
We were going to go Thursday, the twenty-seventh.
We moved it to the twenty-sixth.
And then we moved it to the twenty-sixth, and we're not able to do it, and that.
The location, the location.
The twenty-sixth has been there, bro, two months, so that wasn't available.
Yeah. We have it at station one, perhaps? Like, is there another location we could explore, or no? Maybe rather have it here? And it's just a thought, okay.
I think that may be booked as a separate day for the every other January, every other week, so.
Yeah, the sergeant said as long as he has a notice, he's open to move it. So where we invited D T I, and they're not coming anyway, they defined to attend this meeting, so we just have the R C B coming. So we'll have to talk to the R C B and get a suitable date that we can rearrange the date.
Okay.
Okay, weekly kids games, Wednesday mornings from July third to August twenty-first, nine to eleven A M. Strawberry Social coming up July the eighteenth, that's always an interesting time, and the Blueberry, Blueberry Social coming up on August the fifteenth. So I now need a motion to go into closed session.
I, councillor, hold with the going of closed session.
Secondary.
I, councillor Mackenzie, second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor of moving into closed session are signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded.
Councillor Hall moves to come out of closed session. Councillor Mackenzie, seconds.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. So, council, we need, we need some motions. So who wants to start?
You're going to do land for public purposes?
Yes.
All right, I wouldn't mind doing that. Hi, Susan Jonum, recommend the rural community of Hanwell requests the amount of zero percent, or zero dollars paid for the land for public purposes for the sale of one lot shown on subdivision plan phase twenty-three dash one as per the portal required by the Regional Capital Service Mission.
I, councillor Fox, second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded.
Nay.
I mean, four, four.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm not sure on the count, so I'm gonna go around the A and A, so the clerk can take the numbers.
Yeah, please.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Jonah.
Yay.
Nay.
Yay.
Nay.
Yay.
Yay.
Yeah.
Nay.
So our count is three nays, four ayes, five ayes, sorry.
It's gonna be five, because we need it, it's a total.
So, okay, motion carried. Second motion.
I, councillor Fox, move to renew the snow removal contract by T M C Contracting for the period of November twenty twenty-four to April twenty twenty-five for Hanwell Play Station one, two, and three. As per the contract, the renewal will be the quoted price plus any published increase in the New Brunswick Consumer Price Index.
I, councillor De Cleve, second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Next motion.
I, councillor Heisler, authorize and direct the C A O to contact an H R consultant to review job descriptions and investigate the salary scales for Hanwell staff.
I, councillor Mackenzie, second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. So I think that covers all our motions. No, no one more?
Oh, part-time staff, one?
I, councillor Mackenzie, authorize and direct the C A O to hire a person part-time to assist the building operations officer with his position until he can work at full capacity.
I, councillor, bring the second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Okay, and last but not least, I believe we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, councillor Heisler.
Thank you, council.
Uh, councillor Mackenzie, second.
Meeting adjourned at eight fifty-nine P M.